I'll call the regular meeting of the Dallas Center Grimes School Board to order. Roll call please, Ms. Wareman.
Director Baker Curtis?
Here.
Director Dickinson?
Here.
Director Fiala?
Here.
Director Malmberg?
Here.
Director Carpenter?
Here.
Director McNace? Director Vanderwold?
Here.
I'll acknowledge a quorum. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone registered to speak this evening, Ms. Wareman?
No one is registered to speak.
Okay. Move along to item four, approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
Malmberg?
Second.
Dickinson?
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. The meetings from the previous minutes, we have the regular meeting from September 22nd, as well as a board workshop from the same date. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve. Vanderwold?
Second. Fiala?
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Presentation of bills? Looking for a motion?
Move to approve. Dickinson?
Second. Fiala?
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. The consent agenda. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve. Malmberg?
Second. Baker Curtis?
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item eights, the reports. Any questions from the board on the written reports? Seeing none, we'll move along to item B, math stars recognition. Dr. Bloom?
Alright, good evening. We've got some celebrities in the house. It is not the kindergarten team from South Prairie. I want them to be humble. You're great. You're great, but we've got fourth grade rock stars here, so be humble today. No. It's my pleasure. We need to do this stuff more often because our kids are doing incredible things, but the Department of Education reached out and they have partnered with what's called the National Math Stars, and they are recognizing the top performing math students from across the state on their math ISAS scores in third grade. So, we have nine students that I'm going to announce, and seven or eight of them were able to attend tonight, which is great, but these students represent the top 2% of third grade students last year. They're currently fourth grade students, but third grade students last year, and their performance on the ISAS tests in math. And this is a recognition because of this National Math Star nominee that the state actually sends in. So, this is super cool that DCG has nine of the students across the state that are recognized. So, for these celebrities, when I say your name, you gotta go stand right up there. We're gonna kind of just make a line. Stand right in front of Monica. She will want to be blocked out because we're gonna take a picture. So, alright. So, we'll cheer on these folks as they come up, and then I get to give them a cool medal that should get you discounts at Skyzone. I would assume it's like, hey teacher, I'm not doing my homework, obviously. I mean, look at the medal, right? I'm kind of a big deal. So, alright. Luke Folkerts, who I know couldn't make it tonight, but Luke is on the list. Blake Gustafson. There's Blake. There he is. Just kind of by Monica, and we're gonna go straight across. Max Kemp. There's Max. I'm gonna get your fist bump up there. Quinn Markey. Quinn. There she is. Jackson McKnight. Where's Jackson? Rowan Miller. Rowan. Yeah. I said Romaine? Romaine Lettus? No, Rowan, right here, on my list. Is Addison Pelton here? Did Addison make it? I knew she was a maybe. Okay? Ellery Snow. Where is Ellery? Yes. We need to ask Ellery's dad what she thinks of her new boss. We'll talk about that afterward. Okay? Harper Woolrith. Harper. Alright. I'm gonna grab some medals. I'm gonna make this very Olympic official. And I'm gonna take a big fancy picture. Okay? Ready? Over your neck. So fancy. There you go. There you go, buddy. Rise. Three. Go. Stay up as late as you want, because you're out there. Amazing what these perks have. Good work. This is all the way in. There you go. Okay, one more time. Congrats.
Nice job, Ryan.
Well done.
Well, way to go. Nice job.
Alright. Hold up nice and close. Come on in here.
Snuggle up. Congratulations.
I'll get you a photo. Are you good? Good with pictures? Okay. Alright, congrats. Yay. This meeting will be open till like 8:30 if you want to stick around. Love to have it.
Can I ask one question?
You bet.
How many students are in that pool?
Seven hundred, oh, good question. Seven hundred, I think it was fifty-four. Seven sixty-four are in the top 2%. So, whatever the math is, the total third graders in the state. Yep? Great question. Congrats again. Awesome stuff. Thank you, Ryan.
You bet. Alright, we'll move along to the next item then. Operations department update. Is Travis and Sean? There you are.
You gonna introduce yourself?
No.
Okay.
Why would I introduce myself? Scott asked us to come. We just have, there's quite a few things on the agenda from our department, so we just wanted to talk about a few of those, just to kind of get out in front of it. And if you have any questions, we'll take those as well. You're up first, sir.
Okay, thank you. One of the things that we've been doing since June is taking inventory of the operations equipment and seeing how we use it and utilize it. Thank you for letting us purchase a John Deere Gator that has helped our custodial department out after Friday night football games. We have a blade for it to help with snow removal at the high school, Oakview, and a spreader for the back of it to help with snow removal, so thank you for that. We started looking into two other pieces of equipment that we have that are around the vintage of 2003, which would be an S250 skid loader and a John Deere tractor with a handful of attachments. And we started looking, we got quotes from Bobcat, John Deere, and Avant for a payloader, mini payloader. What we've looked into is the Avant stands out above and beyond the rest of them because it is safe on sports turf. We can take it on our all-weather track. We can take it on our grass field, and it will not disrupt it. So, we were just kind of looking at that piece of equipment with upgrading from 2003 equipment to 25, maybe the possibility of taking over some snow removal with the purchase of that equipment to save the district money.
And one of the things is, we, when looking at our inventory, we have a lot of attachments that just aren't being used because we don't, we don't have the manpower and we don't, to use those back and forth. So, we're looking at having one piece of equipment really take the place of two so we can use it more and then get also in that, kind of switch out some of our attachments that we haven't been using for quite a while, that have just kind of been sitting idle, that have not been in use for us. Next, we'll talk about, does anyone have any questions about that?
What do you do with a mini payloader?
So, you're fine. Nope. So, we have a skid, yeah, so we have a skid loader that we use for a lot of different things to move around. We also have used it for like moving our woodchips, when we put woodchips on all the playgrounds. But over the years, that, with that skid loader and what we're doing, we just, it doesn't have the capacity that we need. So, a mini payloader allows us to be able to lift more, be able to telescope out, to be able to use the piece of equipment more frequently. It also allows us to take on some more snow removal because we can get a bigger piece of equipment. The other nice thing about it that we're really looking forward to is, we right now don't have a piece of equipment that can go on our turf. So, we can do anything you can do with the skid loader, plus anything we can do with our tractor, we can do with this one piece of equipment. So, we'll take from two to one.
Perfect. Also, for these unused attachments, so when you said like swapping them out, is this something, like, these are not universal attachments, I presume, right? So, there would be some trading involved or not necessarily?
The ones that we currently have are not universal. With, if we go with the Avant, they have a lot of attachments that aren't universal for that piece of equipment. So, every piece of attachment that we have right now, we can get for that piece of equipment if we need it.
So, then, we would then like gov deals or something, the attachments that we do have, to offset the cost of the new attachments that would then fit this Avant?
With the Avant, they will actually trade in all the pieces of equipment that we have, which is not what Bobcat or John Deere will not trade those pieces of equipment in. So, then we would have to go gov deals. With this vendor, they're willing to trade in and take all of that. That's why, when you look at it, you'll see there's quite a difference in pay because they'll, they'll take all those attachments.
Beautiful.
On trade-in.
Thank you.
Alright, next we'll talk about snow bids.
So, this year, we had a lot of people bid snow. We had seven bid. I bet I talked to five or six others on the phone asking questions, which is great. They're giving us a really good price that made it competitive. So, we got three vendors in the district. Two are new. Two new ones will be doing Dallas Center schools. One will be doing Oakview. And then, the existing one will be doing the high school, Northridge and Heritage in South Prairie.
Any questions on snow bid?
So, since you said that you, there are a few pieces of equipment that already exist that would allow you to take on some snow removal, what does that look like from your end?
Yeah, so, we'll kind of, right now, if we can get a, if we can get a new piece of equipment that will allow us to take on some of that, our first area that we'll take back would be transportation. Right now, we have transportation built into our snow bid too, like when it comes to the high school. We would take on that to be able to do with the fact that we get a new piece of equipment. And then also, we'll talk about in a minute with hiring a general maintenance person to be able to take on some more of that. Also, with the Gator that was purchased, when you think about, like, when we get an inch of snow in the middle of the day, we can't really get a snow contractor back out here for that. So, we do a lot of shoveling of the high school complex, this complex, and Oakview. That piece of equipment with the, with the new hire will allow us to then clear all that out and make it safer for our students when we get some of that snow in the middle of the day that we can't really justify bringing in a contractor to do.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Travis and Sean, will you take a second to explain kind of how you break down the final cost of the bid? Because I know on the sheet, on the spreadsheet, some of the numbers may be larger to one company than another, but you don't look at, those numbers are like their entire fleet versus like what we actually will use. Can you explain how that works?
Yeah, so, so, snow bid now, just like it has for the past however many years. And what we got some feedback on, and what, when Sean, Michelle, and I sat down, looked at it, what we struggled with was some companies put down their whole fleet that would come in, and this was the X amount for their fleet. Well, if they had 25 trucks, they're not bringing 25 trucks to DCG. That's just the size of the fleet that they have. So, then what we did is we looked at per piece of equipment, what they charged. So, we did that breakdown by each vendor and added that up. And then with the vendor, that was the lowest bid for that. So, next year, we're already have some, some notes on that when we put out snow bid for next year to clarify some of those things, to get some more detailed information. But if you look at the one vendor, I think they said their, their total fleet was 25 trucks, six skid loaders. They're not bringing all that here. That's just all the equipment they had, so that's why we broke it down by those individual pieces.
Thanks.
The next thing we want to talk about, you'll see on the agenda, is we did post for a general maintenance position. So, we've, in our department, we had an electrician last year. That person no longer works with us. That job has been open for a while. We had it out. We kind of shut that electrician position down because we looked at, when we looked back at our data, we didn't have really a 40-hour-a-week job just for an electrician. So, when we look at our needs, we were looking for someone who could come in and help us with our work order system that can kind of take on all the different things that are happening, looking for a well-rounded individual to do all those tasks, and then hoping that this person would then be able to support what we do, a lot of our summer projects, and also help us with that snow removal, putting down ice melt, things like that. So, we put out for a general maintenance position. It was out for two weeks, had a lot of applicants called, interviewed five people, and then have who we would like to take that position. And then the other position that would be new to our department is at night and weekend, activities custodian. This custodian would support, would be housed at other high school, and would support our events that are happening. But the big help that this position would have is, currently, when we have rentals in our facilities, we're using our building custodians on overtime, or we're not really having a custodial presence there. This person would work over the weekend. So, when we have the community basketball league at Northridge, we would have someone there to open it up, be there during the day, to check in, and be there at night to, to help tear down and clean up so that we're not putting that back on our building custodians during the day. So, they would, they would kind of float between all of our buildings, looking at like a Friday to Monday, or Friday to Tuesday, depending on how many hours they put in to really support our weekend events, to help support our activities at night. And then also, we do building checks every single day, either at night when our night custodians are going through the building, or every weekend we have someone come in. This position would take over some of those building checks as well, so we weren't having our daytime custodians come in on the weekend to do building checks, which is, which is on that overtime pay, so to kind of help alleviate some of that as well. And, and I really appreciate Madison and the activities department. We sat down, again, we have, we have done interviews for this, interviewed a handful of people and think we have a candidate that we would like. We're just waiting on some of the paperwork, paperwork and background checks to go through with that. And then also with hiring, we are back to now where we'd be fully staffed in our custodial department. We had one person leave, but we think we have that one filled too. Again, just waiting on paperwork, so we'll be fully staffed again in our custodial crew, which is very helpful. So, any questions on the new hires? Alright, and then our last item is the baseball.
Baseball is in need of some more batting cages. We have one currently out there right now, and we're trying to run 95 kids through it for hitting practice. What's proposed out there is to do a three-bay hitting cage for them. We're running into a time crunch that we need to try to do as much as we can this fall with not knowing how our winter's gonna be or spring to have that new hitting facility ready for them. So, it'd be adding, our existing cage is 15 by 72-foot. We'd be adding another one to each side. So, just need some direction to go forth and get some of that stuff ordered and done so it can be ready for next season.
Yeah, I know that's been a sore spot for a number of years. I think that came to the board in one shape or form. I think the 2080 agreements were kind of standing in the way. We were needing to be able to put that stuff through the Dallas Center City Council process. And so, some of that 2080 work that we did, I don't know, a meeting or two ago, I think helped kind of clear the way for this. But I do know this is an activity that, and an improvement that's been pretty sorely needed for a number of years.
Yeah, and I think with the, the work that we've done with that land swap, I think we're ready to kind of get that moving and then be able to, looking with it with our activities department, this would kind of be the first phase there in trying to maximize that space that we have to make it as efficient as possible and get the best price we can. And then there's some other things that we can do to get some storage and things out there for baseball in the next, you know, the next year as well.
So, is it kind of site prep and concrete yet this fall? And then put the cages up in the spring?
Yeah, if we could get, our, our goal would be if we can get the concrete poured yet this fall, then we would, we would then hopefully be able to get everything set for spring ball. If we don't get that concrete poured, we're probably not gonna be ready for spring ball, just depending on how wet it is this winter and what's going on. So, that could really put us in a time crunch. So, we have, we have lined up the demolition of the fence around it and things that we need to do, and then we can get that concrete poured and ready to go.
Great.
Where's the funding coming from for this?
Pebble dollars.
That's what I figured. Okay. Just checking. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tim Oswald with Piper Sandler.
Good evening. Thanks for your time. So, this is a discussion about what happens should the election pass next week and kind of steps to moving forward. And I'm gonna apologize in advance for discussing IRS-type rules for a little bit, but we kind of need to go over them so you can understand a little bit. Michelle and I and your attorney Beth have been talking some about the prospect of trying to sell some of, of the bonds here yet this calendar year. And that, that causes me to want to pause and tell you one thing that's really important. In the eyes of the IRS, a year is January 1st to December 31st. We're all used to thinking about July 1st to June 30th. But the IRS, because so many different governments that they regulate all across the country, different fiscal years in different states, they have just simply said, calendar year is the, is a year. IRS rules are calendar year-driven rules. And whatever you did in one calendar year has no effect on what you do in the next calendar year. What I mean by that is, in some years, you could issue bonds that meet certain exemptions from the IRS rules. And then, and in the immediately following year, you might issue bonds that are subject to the IRS rules. Both are okay. And so, one of the things that the IRS regulates is interest earnings on bond proceeds. So, when you sell bonds, the money comes to the district, all of it, and you don't spend it all the next day. It sits in the district's investment accounts and it earns interest. And Michelle has the luxury of having to track all of that and then deal with IRS consultant who helps to make sure that the district complied with the, with the rules. Doing okay so far? Alright, so let's talk about what are, what are the rules? Because that's the key thing. Rule number one is you can, you cannot earn a rate of interest higher than the rate of interest on the bond unless you have an exception. So, for example, very simple terms, let's say the bond has an interest rate of 3%. If you earn 4%, you're earning 1% more than the rate of interest on the bonds, and therefore, you're earning 1% of arbitrage. And you would owe that 1% to the IRS at the end of the time. Doing okay still? Okay. There are exceptions where you get to keep that 1%. And the first exception for a school district is that you sell no more than 15 million of bonds in that year. Well, you sold no bonds in calendar year 2025, so you would have the ability to sell 15 million of bonds yet this calendar year if we scurry about and get our, get all our work done ahead of time. If you do that, you have a three-year window to spend the money. And after three years, any money that's sitting idle at that point, Michelle has to restrict the interest rate that it's earning to not more than the interest rate on the bond. You get to keep whatever interest you earned. So, we like that exception because it's kind of a, there's no real tracking mechanism. The IRS just simply gets, says if you're under 15 million, we're just not gonna worry. I'm imparting some little lingo there, but... So, what happens, now, you're voting a much larger number than that, right? And so, eventually, you're gonna sell bonds that are more than 15 million, and you're gonna become subject to the rule. And so, the rule is that you have to have spent the money within two years of when you sold the bond, and you have to meet these six-month tests of spending. And so, after six months, you have to spend 10% of the money, 45% after one year, 75 after 18 months, and 100% after two years. And if you meet those tests, you also get to keep the interest earnings, including the arbitrage. If you don't meet those tests, you're gonna write a check to the IRS for any amount of interest you earn in excess of the interest on the, interest rate on the bond. And it's, it's an accounting exercise and, and a bit of a pain for Michelle. So, still doing okay? Alright. So, the, it seems to me that you're gonna sell some bonds that are subject to the two-year test. Question is when? And, and while we've had a couple, well, one discussion with your architects, in fairness, it's way too early to know what the project construction cash flow might actually look like. Probably have a reasonable idea as to how fast you'll spend money on design costs. But in terms of when will we let a bid, when will they start, how long will they build, we're talking about real rough estimates for right now of, you know, while we think it'll be a two- or a three-year construction cycle. We need to give your architects a little more space to, to, to do their preliminary legwork, and then we can revisit the, how fast you can spend money. The bond issue that, in my mind, the bond issue that you would trigger the IRS rules is one where you have a pretty good idea how fast the money's going out the door so that you're reasonably certain that you've borrowed an amount that doesn't cause you to have to write the IRS a check. Now, there can be unforeseen events, but that's the, that's kind of my thought process on how much you should borrow and when. I welcome your questions or comments to the contrary if you'd like. The logic is, for this discussion for today, is what if we sell 15 million of bonds and close before the end of December? Lock in our, that broader exception. And then come back, you'll, you'll use that money to pay your design costs during the next few months and come back to you probably during budget season when the architects have done more work with a plan on when to sell the rest of the bonds that's tied to how fast they expect money to go out the door. So, what questions can I ask, answer?
Can you just give us a little bit of your thinking, just in terms of the bond market? So, it's good to know these tests, and I think it makes sense that we want to understand project And um I think it makes sense that we want to understand project cash flow. And this is a little different. I mean, there's a, there's a big project with the high school that obviously is gonna be where a lot of the money will go. But there's really work being done to every school in the district. Um uh and and so there's gonna be a lot of money kind of going out, maybe early to to do some of those things or simultaneous with the high school.
Correct.
And so um fair point that we'd need to do that. But I guess my question's more just about the bond market and kind of where that's at now. And if we were to sell fifteen million, you know, there's probably a window of time in twenty-six. We're just, maybe just a little bit from you, do we just need not to worry about that and sell it when we need to sell it? Or is there some thinking about where the bond market is? And is there logical points across, call it the next year, that we should be targeting to sell bonds?
Well, um. I think you're gonna choose, need to choose to sell bonds around two times, two, two timing elements. One is, when do you think you're gonna need money, which is when you've let uh the ancillary or even the high school projects? And the second one is budget season. Neither of which are the bond market driven stuff. It's just those factors that affect when you need money for your project. Um the bond markets are largely functioning correctly and with reasonable access for for folks like yourself. Um I'm not here today to say I think there's a area of concern with access to the markets on reasonable terms. Think you're gonna, as we said today, have access. Things can change, but as as we said today. So I think you're gonna wanna think about accessing the markets around kind of when do you need money? And how does this play into our budget adoption process? One last comment before we go on. In Iowa, you can sell bonds for twenty years, but not twenty years and one month. So we often do a lot of this kind of bond sale action work in April, May. Um with a, with a goal of closing the bond in June, having a twenty budget cycle, twenty-year budget cycle. Remember, you and I pay property taxes September and March. These bonds are paid from taxes. So the county collects the taxes following month, October and May. April, sorry, turns the money over to Michelle. So we don't want to set a bond payment for February first, because Michelle would not have the cash necessary. So we'll be, we'll be setting payments around the end of the fiscal year, usually June one, sometimes May one. Twenty years from June one becomes the exercise that we end up doing. Um so we would probably not push to sell a bond in March. And have, had, because it would be a nineteen-year bond and that we would lose that twentieth year. That has cash flow implications for the rest of the bond sales. Sorry, I interrupted.
No, perfect. Uh one other question, is the fifteen million in twenty-five, is that subject to the two-year test as well?
It's a, it's a, uh it is not. It's a three-year test. And if after three years the money's still there, you just have to restrict the earnings at that point to no greater than the interest rate on the bond.
Okay.
Yeah. That's why we like it. It's got kind of a get out of jail free pass to it.
So so then that may, then there may be a small bond sale then in twenty-seven, or there could be.
I think there will be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Four sales.
Four?
Yeah.
Across four different years?
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
But again, this is all very theoretical until your design team has had more opportunity to do their work. And to come back to you and say, here's when we want to let construction and occupy the space. And that's when Michelle and I will get back to working on cash flows. And come back to you with better ideas for when to sell the remainder of the bonds.
What other questions do we have for Tim? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. Good to see you.
Alright, Ms. Morris, Ms. Heitland?
Now that you've heard all that, we're gonna kick it down to kindergarten level. So first of all, amazing work. I wanna brag on these guys back here. They didn't know I was gonna do this. But these are the kindergarten superheroes right here. An amazing workday today throughout um the whole building with the whole staff. It's such a great opportunity. As I went around the building and teachers had these long lists of things. I got everything checked off my list. They were so excited. They're, I mean, it's all, and they're crossed off all these things on their lists. And getting ready for conferences, um doing their grades, just all the things that they just, that just build up and build up. So it was amazing day to do that. I saw like special ed teachers meeting with the classroom teachers too and just having some of those meetings. But these guys right here, they're taking on a new challenge. They're willing to do, they're like, sure, we'll do it. And um that's what makes them uh some superheroes. Uh clever touches. We have had none in our building. We have had uh projectors, interactive projectors. And they're kind of starting to um not work so well. And I think they got to the point they were kind of tired of them not working so well. So they volunteered to kind of be um the first group of people to have those. So we've had them purchased and just look, waiting for, when could we get those installed? So um Travis and Sean and Hopper's team, they all came in this morning and they installed them. And that's a new piece of technology that they worked all morning to install them. When did they get them done? When did you guys? So after lunch, they got a tutorial from um our tech department. And they're ready to go tomorrow and use this new technology with their students. And I, they're excited. We'll see how they look. But super, I'm, I'm just super proud of them to take on that challenge and be like, sure, we'll do it, you know, whatever is best. Um we know we need this. And so uh they're willing to jump in and do anything, as with the kindergarten Kickstarter. So piloted this program and we told you we would come back and share the results, so I'm gonna let them take over.
Hello, good evening. I'm Stephanie Shultis. Um first of all, we just wanted to thank all of you for um just supporting us as we piloted our kindergarten Kickstarter initiative. Um we do feel like it was a very positive experience for our students and for our staff. And tonight, we would just like to share our feedback and also the parents' feedback. We did send a survey out after everything was over and just share with you how everything went.
So first, um we'll do some things that went well from the teacher's perspective, so some teacher feedback. Um we felt like kids form relations, relationships with the entire team. Um this has been helpful during our PLC conversations, um lunch duty, recess, et cetera. Open house night, we got to meet all the kids and families that came. Um transportation forms were filled out, which was huge. That's a big stress for us at the beginning of the year. So it was nice to have a majority done. Um we also had um a lot of various staff members help with that check-in. Um we've been able to have powerful conversations about balancing classrooms um at the beginning of that time together. But also um since then, we've had great conversations because we know the kids pretty well um through our PLC time. Also, switching kids went very well. Students seemed to enjoy visiting four different classrooms each day for different activities. They usually came in, smiled, excited um to be in the different rooms, so it was neat.
And then I'm gonna share the parent feedback of things that went well. Um most of the families understood the importance of balancing the classrooms to meet all of our students' needs. They appreciated all the communication prior to school starting. And during that first week, we really tried to overcommunicate. Um so we had our spring parent meeting. AJ, thank you so much for all of your help in your posts. Um we had Parent Square posts as teachers. We had our open house night where we were all there to answer questions. Um we also sent reminders and information during that first week of school. And then on that Wednesday, when we had um our placement messages go out. And parents also felt like the transition to the permanent classrooms was a positive experience for their child.
Some things we want to improve on for next year, um have more volunteers at the door for check-in to speed up the process a little bit quicker. Um we want to put names on their wristbands instead of their name tags. Those seem to fall off really easily, or they just pulled off. Um uh we want to allow parents to come in um only on the first day of school instead of the first official day of their new classroom. And then continue open house in the library to check-in, meet all the teachers and drop off supplies. But allow families to peek into the classrooms if they would like. We could have a couple helper, helpers monitoring the classroom in that area. Just so then it was monitored and people weren't going in. So we thought that'd be a good idea, so people could see it. Um we also had eleven families who brought their students on Wednesday, even though communication was sent through Parent Square. And on open house night that we wouldn't have school that Wednesday. Um we're gonna put a bracelet on kids Tuesday afternoon that says no school on Wednesday as a reminder. So hopefully that will be helpful.
And that was the great thing is we, we knew who they were, like, and I was up at drop-off and it's like, nope, get back in your car.
Um and then I'm gonna share the parent feedback piece of things that they would like to see improved for next year. Um the big thing was parents want to be able to walk in their child on the first day of school. Instead of like their first official day with their permanent teacher. Um they wanted to be able to see our kindergarten classrooms, um either open house night or before their child started. That was important to them. Um and then just commu, we, although we communicated it, maybe having some more communication about like why we're doing Kickstarter. Um be, balancing behaviors, um also having those interactions between students and adults. And then even the little things like telling parents about like there's the student connections about we, we may not want you to be in the same classroom as your cousin. Or your neighbor, or your daycare friends, just trying to balance all those little things that go into creating those good classrooms.
Um here were a few specific comments from parents on our survey that we got back. Um one parent shared that I love the new and exciting way to get to know our students and place them with care and connection. Uh Kickstarter meeting was very helpful and great, had great communication. Um one parent said she totally gets it, the need for something like this. I've seen what happens when classes get stacked with needs. Very disruptive and harder to move or transition kids after, year after year has started. And I don't know all the logistics or restrictions, but I do believe there might be other ways to meet the need without disrupting the first day of school. She thought it was really organized, though.
And then just overall, we had twenty-five um parents respond out of around seventy-three um families. Um twenty-three of those twenty-five had positive experiences, two did share negative experiences. Um and those that shared the positive experiences gave us good feedback on how we can improve or what they would like to have. Or um to know or to do differently for next year, which we kind of shared earlier, some changes that we would be willing to make and make it a little better for families.
So I'm gonna repeat some of the things they said too, um because the things that they said as, as they, they just mentioned. But um they're already thinking about the feedback that they got from parents. They're like, oh, well, we could do that different. But these were coming from the parents who, who said it was a good idea, but did you think about this? Or did you think about this? It's just like the open house night. We really would like to see the classrooms. The first day of school, we didn't let the parents walk in. We, we thought, oh, well, they'll want to come in when it's their classroom on the, and their first day would be with their. Well, that's not, that's not what they, they wanted to come in with their student on the first day. So these are things that we're gonna consider and we're gonna look at for next year. But these are some things that I noted, um some misconceptions. Um we heard that it gave the opportunity to cherry pick their students. It wasn't a draft and it wasn't cherry picking. But it still seemed, you know, sometimes there was that misconception that there's just this drawing of, I want that student because they're the best. I want. They, I will tell you, these guys spent a lot of time even before that day. Um the data that we had from preschool, uh preschool actually, and Gina, um from the students that they had data on. Made class lists for us and we started with that. And they looked at the data they had. But then all the other students coming in that we don't have data on, trying to place them the best we could. But starting with something and then um then really taking that uh from that first day. And then seeing where, what changes do we need to make? Because even when uh when we do a class from first to second grade, sometimes we get it wrong. Because sometimes those kids weren't together before and then we put them together in the next grade and it's like, whoa, that wasn't a good choice. So um it, it's not cherry picking or because I like that student. It's, it's really what is the mix? It's not about the teachers, it's about the mix of students. Um and it was interesting because um and and the parent said, this, this came from my five-year-old. But the five-year-old gave the impression that they were with that same teacher the whole day. They weren't. They went to all classes both days. But yet when the student would come home and report, they were like, well, I was, I was in the classroom with my teacher the whole day. Well, you know, they, five-year-olds can't give the, the accurate what happened. And once again, many of the students um probably were traveling with the same group of students that they started with. Because we're not doing fruit basket upset. That kind of defeats the purpose. It's a lot of thoughtful preparation goes into making those lists to begin with. But before the end of the first day, I said I was involved in some conversation. I went down, you know, midday, lunch. Okay, talk to me. Let's, let's talk about it. What do you see already? Where do you see, maybe we might need to mix up some students, maybe mix it. We were making some changes day one before the first day was over. Where we had moved, we, and it wasn't like a lot. But you move a couple of students, it changes like the dynamics of a classroom a great deal. And so you're not gonna see that and you won't know that. And the, the students don't know that either and they don't see that. They're five. Um these guys just definitely, my perception, what I said, is they, they are so, they collaborated so well together. Um really, really being very thoughtful in that. And I think that goes into some of my, more of my notes. Because um they know these students at a different level. They know, I don't think that's what I meant to say. They know them differently than they knew students previously. They know the students coming in. Now you're, you're like Patty, they just saw them for two days. But before, it took them a long time to get to know. Um I think Catherine and you guys were talking about when they're in PLCs and they're talking about the students and their data. They know the students, they know them by name. They, they can recognize them because they did spend time with them. When they're out on the playground, out at recess, in the hallway, they know those students' names. Whereas before, it's like, well, they never saw them. They weren't in their classroom. The other interesting thing is those students have been with those teachers and see them as their, as other teachers too. So that's been good too. So they're aware of who they are, they know these students. And this has started a new practice that we started doing because I know how collaborative they are. And because they know, because they've put these classes together and they know the makeup of each one of the classes. When we have new kindergarten students move in, it used to be, okay, they have the fewest number of students or they're the next person to get a new student. That's where that student goes. I don't do that anymore in kindergarten. Because they know the students in all of their classes. A new student comes in, I come down and talk to them, like, where do you think we should put this student? We put them somewhere, but that may not be where that student ends up. We see how that student does and it's like, ooh. I think this would be a student that would be better in another classroom. So all year, it's that level of trust that they have with each other. That is like, ooh, I think that this might be a better mix with your classroom. And we're able to do that throughout the year so that we can keep that good balance. And I think that's it. So what thoughts, questions do you have for me, for these guys? They have put a lot of work into this and we were thrilled. Um like I said, we had, we didn't get a lot of response back, but about a third of them.
Firstly, I'd like to say thank you for being willing to do this like crazy, exciting, amazing new thing. Like, it's bananas, but also like really cool. And hopefully something that um sets a precedent for more collaboration and more creative ways to do the best for all of our students. Um the only real question I have is if you have an idea of what percentage of kindergartners or students coming in you had data on beforehand? Like how, about how many you had preschool data on?
You know, but I didn't count that out this time. We did, we had that before. Thirty or forty kids out of the seven, seven, yeah.
Okay, so half-ish, okay.
I can get that exactly too. I do that every year. I just, I didn't figure that up. It's not in my head.
You had other things going on, Patty? I don't, I don't know. And and to work on on that amount of data, I mean, honestly, is kind of good, I guess. You know, like obviously a hundred percent would be fantastic, but.
It would be great. And it's not to say that, um, I mean, some of the students that um come in maybe have had preschool from other preschools. But we don't have any of that data. They might have been at other daycare preschools, but they run and operate differently than the DCG preschools do too. So. Um, the data that we have all comes from our DCG preschools and transitional programming. And so, um, like I said, we appreciate their ability to help us, you know, with what they have to give us a starting point. Because without that, we're just.
Oh, absolutely.
And so we appreciate working with them too, because that's always very helpful. And you know, we've talked about like, um, April and I have conversations all the time and and we look at that also and. I don't know what what your percentage of students, April, that come into to Northridge that have went to preschool, but it's higher than mine.
Yeah, probably a little bit higher um than less the last couple of years. I also think our preschool numbers have been down for the last couple of years.
I know it's it's changed, hasn't it?
It has changed. Quite significantly, I would say, since we went to neighborhood schools. And I, it's not because we went to neighborhood schools, it's just.
It is what it is.
That's where it fell in the timeline. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other thoughts?
Well, I want to thank you also for everything. This is really exciting. Do we see this expanding out to the other elementary schools? Is that something we're looking at? Is it kind of up to each school?
Each building and and what they see is best for them because like every building has a different mix, a different clientele and. You know, we saw a need in our building and they may not have the same. Um, concerns or the same need that we saw amongst our students. And when we were seeing the that that build up from every year. Of just the big emotions in a classroom. And I can tell you this year, what was set up, it would have been your classroom. Had a lot of big emotions. So Stephanie is here tonight saying, thank goodness. We did some switching and moving around because, you know, it's like, it's just where they end up and just. It's just that some kids just haven't had the background of experiences. And they they just end up in the same place and and it's not by, it's just because we don't know them. And how do you get to know them or how do you try to mix them up and and in two days, can you tell? We can tell a lot in two days. We could tell the big emotions to get those students um mixed up into a different classes.
Thank you for trying this and thank you for coming back to tell us about it because I've been looking forward to this ever since I knew we were doing this. So I've been very excited to hear your report back to us. So thank you.
Awesome. They put a lot of extra work and um I appreciate all that they've done. Great team.
Great job.
Thank you very much. And as April and Gina come up, Shirley, to your question, we brought back last spring the kindergarten roundup at all buildings. So our families could get in, check out everything. So that'll be back and then yeah, schools will have the option. Do they wanna do the Kickstarter thing again or or not? Yeah, yep, exactly.
Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you for the opportunity for us to come and talk a little bit. And I say us, it's Gina. Gina's going to talk with you about um transitional kindergarten. She's just got a lot of great things to share about this opportunity that we have for um students in our district. That um we felt that it was important that maybe we got out in front of everyone, so.
Alright, so we've got a lot of little pictures on here too. Can you see some of my little cuties this year? But just starting out, this is kind of what it looks like on the um school website, if you look. Thank you AJ, by the way. The who, what, when, where, why kind of thing out there. So you want to find out about transitional, that's where you go. That is a typical schedule right there and what we fit in. And today we were doing a little extra work and at one point April stopped and said, you do all of that in a half a day? And I said, yes, that's why I'm so tired in the evening. So three hours. In three hours. So there is a lot going on. Um, but that's just kind of an overview of what the schedule would look like. And then on here, I kind of broke it down and told you what we do and just kind of what is happening in those areas. When they come in, right away, they have an activity they need to do. Could be writing their name, practicing letters, numbers, any fine motor skills they might have to work on. If they've missed something the day before, this is a good catch-up time. Then our social or morning meeting, we use Second Steps, which I started when I was at South Perry and it's just carried over to helping those kids. Like what to do when you're frustrated, different ways to ask for help. How do you ask a friend to play, those kind of things? Also the greeting, we're really working on getting to know everyone's name and knowing who's in your class. Instead of, hey, him did this or he did that. You'll actually know what their names are. Then we move right into number corner. I do a a bridged or modified um bridges. But we do a lot with like the tally marks, the ten frames, um knowing what comes before and after a number, rolling dice, counting right away, subitizing. Um, all of those things. And then it leads into snack, which we do watch a little book of the day. And then while they don't have to watch that, they can whisper with their friends if they want to. Then we get the wiggles out at recess and build those friendships. We're out with the kindergarten teams as well. And then work on those low, our large motor skills. And when they come in, they know we all start singing the song for you, fly. Yes, I've made that up. And we do some letter names and letter sounds, heart words. Um, that's all of our phonics, all of our learning that goes with that. And then move into our centers. Our center time is where they get to play independently in groups. They pick their spots. At the same time, we are either, I'm working with them in a small group, either one-on-one or one-on-four is my max. Um, it's also the same time that they have specials. So if we have specials, we kind of rotate our day as we go. And then um at the very end of that, we take the last ten minutes and do our Hegarty, which is our phonemic awareness. And right now, it's a whole group thing. We'd like to move it to a small group so we can actually zone right in on what those kids need. And then we move into the whole group instruction. So that's the fine motor and theme building. And then we pack up, it's time to go home and have lunch and it's ready to happen again. So that's that's my day. And then we do have specials. We meet once in a six-day cycle. It's a twenty-minute class. We have PE and library. And then uh Ms. Erps and I are going to meet for arts. We meet like two times a year to do a project with the kids. So maybe Dippy this year, our first year was to find data that answered the following question. How can I help them be more successful and ready for kindergarten? I'm really diving deep into what I am doing for a curriculum and what needs to be there. And the stuff that they already know and kind of taking that out and moving to what's more up to date. So there's that general feedback for the program and what other districts are doing around. And I've contacted a lot of other districts, either looking online or emailing um other teachers or principals and finding some information. So last year I collected the data for other districts and there's some surveys that you're going to see. And I believe that's the next one. Yep, so there are surveys. We sent one out for the past DCG. Transitional kindergarten parents was formerly known as optional kindergarten. I also had the kindergarten parents from the twenty-four, twenty-five year. And then I also questioned all the kindergarten teachers. This year, I'm working with April and Shanna on the following curriculum resources, standards, and then report card statements. So we're gonna update a bunch of that this year. And then this program's really evolved over the years to meet the needs of the ever-changing students and their parents. Things are way different than they were when I started. Um, we've not had as many open enrolled students because a lot of districts are now offering those programs. I think this year, um, I've already had two people contact to ask about what the program is about and what they should do to start the program. So it's becoming pretty prevalent around us. So thank you for your time. If you have any other questions but anything, um, let me know.
Any questions from the board?
I do have one question for you. So I am a huge fan of this. Obviously, I have a son that's a seventh grader who was in your class a few years back. But um, we've had a lot of questions and feedback from, uh, and we've talked a lot about, do we make this full day? Do we keep it half day? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, yeah, there are, there are differing opinions out there. Um, I do feel like there are so many full-time positions out there that are just getting. More time with those students and are able to dive a little deeper into those skills that they're not being prepared for at home. We've talked about how we are doing a lot more teaching basic skills that they would normally have had in years past with their family. And that's just being overlooked. I would be able to work on those skills more. Um, I feel like I'm just sticking my toe in the water when I could actually help teach them to swim, basically. So I do feel that the full day would really benefit the kids.
Thank you. And I, and and as you know, I mean, my job is to do the best with taxpayers' dollars. And I know that we've got to decide, we can't, everybody can't get what they want. In a perfect world, what I would like to do is offer both. Offer a full-day program and a half-day program. We got feedback from people both. But I know that's not the reality of, you know, our current state. I think there's benefits. For both. Um, I do think Gina would have more time. Of course, time is, you know. The one thing that I would like to look at and explore is if we continue with a half-day program. How can we, is there something we can do on Wednesdays? Um, can parents sign up to bring their kids in for an additional time? Um, that would give a little more time. But I think there's benefits to both. Um, and knowing that having to balance the budget is something that we have to consider also.
I don't know all the ins and outs.
You just know you. You do a fantastic job. So thank you. She does do a phenomenal job.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to say, it's been, I mean, I've had the opportunity years ago to be a preschool director in the district. And that was a phenomenal opportunity. I learned a lot about um preschool. This has also been an opportunity that um I have learned so much from Gina. And um I have started to say, you're not always going to do this, but we have to know the things that you do. And so the work that her and um Shanna have, and I'm just sitting there listening, it's gonna be really great, the work that they are doing too. But um we are extremely blessed to have Gina as our transitional kindergarten teacher in the district.
Thank you.
Thanks Gina, thanks kindergarten team.
Alright, Dr. Krenza.
Okay, just have a quick few updates for you. The first is in regards to state reporting. So you can say, I told you it got quiet and then it got busy again. So uh we had certified enrollment, uh count day October first. With that same time, we start working on fall student reporting in Iowa, which is looks at all of our program data and our uh fall uh waitings. And so uh that kind of goes through a couple like uh correct or submit, then you correct and then you resubmit. That is also tied with certified enrollments. So those are those first three together. We did update our tag plan and cover sheet to the state. Um, our universal desk audits for both K-12 and preschool are both in progress. We submitted fall beds on the twenty-first of October. And uh I apologize, Carrie, I wasn't sure what date you finished. I think I did this before you hit submit. So. But our fall bed staff, which accounts for who's in our district, licensure and salary and all the benefits. Uh, that has also been completed by Jamie and Carrie and his team. So uh we're in pretty good shape. Uh, the bottom just provides you just an overview of SRI. So questions about state reporting? Alright, um professional development wise, you can see over the course of October, um things are going very smoothly. I really am enjoying it. I know with the amount of content that we cover, it's always just a good reminder, those every Wednesdays are busy. Uh, on any given day, whether it's at a building, of course, or at the district, um they're um getting good content there. But when we have our flex days and our PLC days, we have curriculum reviews being done as well as PLCs. On our flex days, um you'll see all the teams that we meet with, which ranges from some curriculum teams to special ed, EL, tag, nurses. It's incredible, uh, the work that happens. And that that takes almost a small army to coordinate all of that and individual planning. So uh we continue with great work there. Uh, been really pleased. We had some additional, October is a busy, busy month. I think every conference that could ever be held in the state of Iowa is held in October. I understand why with weather and those kinds of things. But the two big ones, I would say, is we had a chance to send teams from every building to the ITech Conference. So along with Stephen Hopper and getting great information about instructional technology. And how that we can enhance learning in our classrooms. I just had an email from a a teacher in our district, just. Sharing how excited she was to be able to come back and implement some of the creative things that she's used there. So those outside PD sessions are super valuable. And they bring back things to our district. And then we also, I'm proud to share that our talented, our, what we call our gifted and talented services team. All of the teachers, GT teachers, were able to present along with Kate Boonstrom from Heartland AEA, uh presented at the ITAG conference. So we had two day, two great days of learning there. Questions about professional development?
Do we see at some point, um, I know we have instructional coaches that help with the curriculum planning and stuff. At some point, given that we are moving toward implementing to new technology and like these lower-level classrooms, like the the clever touch and stuff. Do you see us bringing on a role of like a a tech coach?
We just talked about that the other day. Funny that you should mention that. As we're starting to think about next year. You know, we need to look at our our TLC budget and see what positions might be, are needed. Um, and what any changes that we would propose to make to the TLC grant. Uh, Mrs. Olson oversees that work. But but definitely it would be hard. Uh, what we see right now is definitely have a focus on the hardware side with Stephen and that's an incredible team that he has. They're fixing the computers, they're working on connectivity, they're doing all the behind-the-scenes hardware work. The software side, how do we begin to, you know, incorporate technology into our lessons? It's definitely a need area for us. So we don't have exact, exact answers now, but the need has been expressed.
Yeah, thanks Nancy. That's when when Shanna, Greg, Steve and I met to kind of talk about how we can continue to help those. We're so blessed that our tech team and teaching and learning work together. They're not too. But they both kind of share with me like, the gap is probably in that. Here's a new piece of technology or new software. It, we probably don't have the manpower or expertise in a tech world to go teach that part. But then we don't have, Greg and Shanna can't, they maybe don't have the tech knowledge or whatever. So is there this missing? Position that is maybe a, was a teacher and enjoys teaching, but has this tech skill desire? That they're actually the ones training on clever touches, meet, going to classrooms and here's how you can use this software. So it's perfect timing for this.
Yeah, we don't want the technology to be a substitution for the high-quality teaching. We want it to be an additive.
Stephen did a really great job and I think it's because of he's had experiences in other districts to talk about different models that could be used. So is it one person for the entire district who's spread pretty thin and trying to go and cover K-12? Is it a stipend position in which we give teachers some money to then be the tech person on site? And then we get creative around that. I think we still have a lot of details to meet out there as well as some other TLC requests, which we could speak about later. Um, but definitely it's something, I I think as the district can, you know, um continues to shift, technology is getting, is changing so rapidly. Um, we need to be prepared for that. So, thank you. Yeah. Other questions about PD? Uh, I wanted to commit and recognize, uh, we had our first SIAC meeting of the year. Personally, it's just a favorite of mine and I'll say why is uh getting people together to talk about the state of our district. You can see the agenda there, talk about and be able to brag about our um student achievement data, but also to identify some areas for growth and improvement. Uh, I didn't count the number there that night, but I, it was a lot. Like, I think there was fifty, at least fifty if I was counting. Uh, what's nice is that we get some voices heard from different levels. We had a student present. Students continue, they are so great. We have several on the list, but also they get so busy with their schedules, um that we'll continue to think of other ways for students. But I'm grateful for that. It was a beautiful night that night. So to have fifty people stay for an hour and also heard from Dr. Bloom about facilities. Um, our next one is February third, so um Dr. Bloom and I have that on our list to kind of plan that next content. Which will look to be things like bullying and harassment, which is required as part of our updates, a mid-year data update, and then just more district progress. I'm thankful for that team. We did have also, uh, kudos to Austin Roy, our high school assistant principal, and Mrs. Kenda from Oakview. Who presented on the district career and academic plan. And just a shout out to both them. You will be hearing next month from Colin Lane, who is our new career and technical education teacher leader, program teacher leader. And he's gonna come and talk a little bit about just updates to CTE, his position, which is undoubtedly tied to uh career and academic planning. You will, we are, last year was really a planning year and kind of a come together and really restart the work. This year is getting publicity out. We need to start talking more and more about careers and where, what instruction looks like. The state also added requirements at the middle school, so fifth and sixth grade. So um this is getting exciting because it is so tied. So this is getting exciting because it is so tied to outcomes for post-secondary education too. So more to come with D cap. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bloom.
All right. Thank you, team. We start off with.
We had one single family building permit in Grimes last month, so just the one. We had five in that Willow Hills plat. I did reach out last month to Nikki Rorda, the superintendent at Johnston, and she respectfully declined my offer to just have her give us the land. Nikki, it's, it's tough for you guys to get a bus out here. They go from Grimes to Johnston to Grimes. Let me, she's very kind, but said, maybe another day. So I tried. Certified enrollment. I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this. If you're looking in the packet, I'm really going to spend just on the, on the very first page because the rest of them kind of get a little bit more granular, but the main three numbers I want to share with you. So we have our official certified number of being down 41.6 students. Remember, the decimals get a little funky because ELL, IEPs, they all kind of have some different numbers. But when it comes to kind of state-driven dollars, we're down 41. Those are resident students. So they, you know, compared to last year, we had 41 less students that live in Dallas Center and Grimes that go to DCG. So that of course is not, not good news. If you remember last year, I think our number was about 55-ish. So it's, it's less, which is good, but it's still down. Now, we were up 16.6 in that open enrolled number. So we do say minus 41 from a resident count, but that served. How many kids are actually in your building in front of a teacher? That number is, is closer to a minus 25. So that's kind of the difference between those two numbers. So again, it's better that it's not as much. Still a bummer that we're now three years in a row. But I'm going to talk about something when I pull it up here in a second. The other number I want to bring to your attention at the bottom of the first page is the ESA funded students. Last year we had 76. This year we have 118. So that's a, that's a pretty big jump. What I do not yet have for you are the number of kids that sat in this district physically last year that now go to a private school. My belief is that still the majority of those 118 went to a private school last year. But this is the first year that the income caps are gone. So I think most likely, and, and when we get the actual numbers and people all share, that most of those probably went to those private schools. They now just get the funding from the state because they didn't meet the guidelines the last couple of years. So again, it's somewhat of a educated guess, but I do not think we actually have 40 or so kids that we taught last year that are not here. I think that number's a lot smaller. But again, those ESA numbers did go up. There are more students and families receiving state aid for those numbers, for those kids. So what I am going to try on the fly to, to share with you, I should have had it ready, is I, I got an opportunity to meet with the ad hoc committee on, Carrie, last Tuesday? Tuesday? Thursday, thanks. And shared some, what I thought to that team was some very interesting en- enrollment data. So if you will give me a second, sorry gang. Ad hoc committee. Okay. I won't project it for you, but I'm just going to kind of share. There were, I looked at, Michelle and I looked at schools that are similar in size, are in our Little Hawkeye Conference, or ones that are around us that get, we get compared to a lot. And found this to be pretty darn fascinating. DCG was down about 41 students or 25 served. Ames, down 61 and down 115 students served. Ankeny is down 73 students, minus 40 serves. They have a little higher open enrollment. Indianola down 91. Johnston, this is, this was a, a big one to me that I just didn't see coming. Johnston is down 66 certified students, 106 served students. I, I don't know this, Nancy Mae. I'm not sure the last time Johnston was down students. I don't know if this was. Yeah, it's, it's probably been a little bit for them. Norwalk is up 40. They were one of the few that are up, but their open enrollment out was 35, so they're up five. Pell is down almost 50. Urbandale's down 62. West Des Moines was down almost 300 students. Waukees is up 395 certified, 344 served. Those of us that know this area know Waukees well. I'm not sure that's half of what they thought was coming. Like they're in the 6, 7, 800 plus students every year. That is a significant dip, even though it's still up, which is, which is good for them. This led to a great conversation with our team internally, ad hoc, just about how much of this is a programming question versus kind of a life cycle question? Meaning we don't have a lot of homes that are being built. They're coming, but we don't have a lot of access to where like Norwalk, for example, just opened a nice chunk of neighborhoods. So I think when they were built, people moved in. I'm optimistic we're going to be in the same boat. You know, when, when the houses are there. I'm also excited that we're going to diversify, I hope, some of our housing complexes. We can't just have $750,000 homes for people to buy. So we're going to get some more townhomes, condos, apartments, houses. But we are, we know we're having less kids. Polk County, Dallas County share that with us. I know Grimes is optimistic about growth. Dallas Center, I met with their city manager two weeks ago, optimistic about where they're going. So ad hoc's got an important role at still looking at programming. We kind of shifted a little bit and I want to steal the spotlight from Carrie. I think they're going to present maybe next month or in December. Like it's somewhat shifted to like, okay, let's look at what DCG is best for kids, staff, families, get creative. Not maybe the, how do we get more kids here? Because this data tells us, a superintendent I thought put it pretty well in a meeting last week. We probably need to stop asking, where are the kids going? And more of a, where are the kids? This data tells us they're not leaving DCG and going to Johnston. Johnston's down more than us. They're not going to Waukees. Waukees down half, like it's, it's probably a bigger, I guess, society issue than, my gosh, they're leaving DCG because of X. So interesting figures for all of us in the metro area. I'm still very optimistic that that minus 41 is going to dip even lower next year. Hopefully the following year after that, maybe is there some growth because we've got three neighborhoods around us that are starting to build some basements, put in some roads, and then optimistic in Dallas Center. I know they've got land ready to go. They're talking with that contractor about what are the steps to get them moving. So that's kind of the, the certified enrollment. So we'll use those numbers moving forward, budget, budget wise. Michelle and I already talked. We bring in Tim, who you got to see again today. Appreciate him. Like we're going to, we're going to be able to talk about what DCG can still do, down some kids to make sure our teachers and staff get the appropriate dollars they deserve. We're still going to have to hire some people, right? The, the high school, for example. They, they're still growing. They've got, they've got more kids than, than not over the next few years. So we're, we're going to play that balancing act again to both take care of staff and add as necessary and be fiscally responsible. So questions maybe on enrollment before I keep moving? Okay. Bond information, just to be brief, it's just a reminder to, to those maybe watching at home. Excited to have the bond forum tomorrow. So we'll have the, the board candidate forum start at 6:00 in the auditorium. That'll go till 6:45, but then 7 o'clock is the bond forum. Certainly would love to have anyone in this room come. We've, we've taken questions we've got from our online submissions, questions we've heard on social media, just wherever. And AJ's done a heck of a job kind of putting together a list of those questions. So at the table tomorrow night, myself, OPN will be there to answer some questions. Michelle will kind of have some budget talk. Matt Blackmore will be there to talk some of the high school programming things. Madison's going to be there to answer some activities questions. Greg's got a, a role here. He's going to share some info. So I think we've got probably 15, 18 questions and we'll just have them up like we kind of did two years ago with some different topics and people will be able to share out. But I think the vast majority of the questions have still, the, the property tax question, which hopefully we've, we've been able to kind of tackle, but we'll keep answer, we'll answer that again tomorrow night. And yeah, just, just share a lot of the neat stuff that's come if our families will have us say yes. A week, week from tomorrow. It's crazy. I, Channel 13 was nice enough. They came in this morning. So if you're up really early at 5:00 AM, you can see my ugly mug on there. And then KCCI is on Wednesday. So we're just trying to continue to get the, the word out. But very optimistic and I want to end this part with thanking the community members that have been out and about, knocking on doors, answering questions, putting up signs. Social media this weekend and today had some more questions and they were very good about reaching out and clarifying. So, you know, just very lucky with the, the support we have in this community. So any bond question?
I know that in the past, that forum for the candidates was recorded and then pushed out.
Yes.
Will this bond town hall also be recorded and pushed out? And when do we expect that to occur?
Yep, thanks Nancy. Yep, we will be recording the, the board forum and the bond forum. AJ, do we think? Yep, so we'll do it Tuesday night and it will be out the next day. Yep, so that'll be good. You bet. I'm going to jump because I got two fun things at the end. So I'm going to jump to superintendent goals. So as I have my individual goals with you each year of things that I want to tackle and improve on. This can be changed, added, adjusted, you know, whatever you all see best. But you know, last year was really the strategic planning work and kind of the OPN facility master planning work. So I thought it might be appropriate that this year I focus on the initial implementation of this work. So I put in here kind of a, a plan with some outcomes on how we can start implementing the strategic plan in this year and then for years to come, what the communication will look like. I meet with our senior leadership team twice a month. And for, in about an hour, it's a combination of some work time to collaborate with each other, but also some sharing out, where are you on this stuff? You know, in, in full honesty, there's a lot on there for year one and, and we're going to work diligence down there. We're, we're not going to be able to tackle with fidelity all of that. There's going to have to be some things that, you know, probably shift a little bit. But it's, it's right now kind of living on the senior leadership time. So we can get some things off the ground and moving and then ultimately, right, goes to some principal or, or different directors down to the teaching level. So excited to watch that process kind of, kind of phase out. So that, and then, you know, knock on wood, hopefully in eight days or so, we're celebrating a bond passing. So it'll be starting again, the implementation of the facility master plan, both from the bonding side, but also the other items that we still need to, to tackle that are outside of, of the bond itself. So again, working with our directors, operations team, Michelle, OPN, DCI, our construction management crew, being open with you all, our, our, our families, where's their money being spent? What's the progress of these projects, evaluating their effectiveness? So I kind of thought those two may still be appropriate with the implementation side. And then my summary was kind of like, I, I feel like both of these goals for me, you know, if done well, are going to strengthen our system. They, they will impact staff and, and kids for sure. Again, being responsible with our dollars and cents and certainly being open with all of you and our families. Continuing to build, build trust to say, hey, we're an open book and answer their questions. And then always looking at ways we can improve. When the strategic plan is working, great. When we're hitting some hiccups, hey, what have we got to change to make better? Always being kind of reflective and, and those items. So with that, I thought it'd be, you know, beat those up, give me different ideas, ask some questions. But those are my kind of proposed items as we tackle the next six or seven months. Any questions there?
I appreciate measurable outcomes listed. I think that that'll be really helpful when it comes to, you know, evaluation.
Exactly, yep.
But, but having that broken out and showing that not only is it just like lip service on them, you know, because obviously, hey, these are my go, whatever. But like, no, no, here are the action items. Here are the calls to action. Here's how you can see that I did do A, B, and C. So I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, wasn't on here, but because I was kind of waiting for this weekend, but I want to highlight some of our activities from Madison before I finish with the Creator stuff. So we've had as good of a, a fall activity season as I think any school can possibly have. So just a couple of highlights I want to make you aware of if you are not already. First, in the fine art side, our marching band competed a couple of weeks ago at state competition in Waukees. And we're in the big class, of course. They got fourth, which is just an incredible, you, you probably are up in the morning seeing the lights on. Like they, that group works as hard as any organization activity we've got. So incredible work by the band, which includes of course, the color guard, includes the conductors, the, the whole deal. It's, it's amazing. We had 28 students audition for all-state music this past Saturday in Atlantic. 28's a large number to begin with. We had 11 of the 28 be accepted, which it's not an infinite number of people that make all-state to have 11 is an incredible number. So just super proud of the whole 28 for putting themselves out there. And the 11, again, that get to represent DCG is extremely exciting. Volleyball. So we're going to go from bond forum and sprint to the gym because volleyball will be in the regional final against ADM. Starts at 7:00 tomorrow night. Tickets can, on bound. We did have a sponsor pick up 100 student tickets. So our students are able to go support our ladies volleyball. And again, the first 100 will, because it's a state event, right? So their passes don't work. So that number was picked up and I think that's, I mean, that's eight or 10 bucks a pop. So someone picked that up and remains anonymous. They're great. And so love to see you all there and the kids there. That's going to be great. So they would play next week at state, cross-country, both boys and girls qualified for state. To be honest, that's kind of, it, it is what it is. That's just what these two teams do. They're always in the state competition. They're always competing for championships. They're incredible. So that is Saturday up in Fort Dodge. So little run there. So good luck to them. And then football team had a fantastic season for the first time in the biggest class. 10th in the rankings how they do it. So they will travel to Sioux City East on Friday. Sponsors came in and picked up a charter bus actually for them. So our kids can go on that. And right now the plan, Madison is working to find, you know, a chaperone or two. And we are offering a pep bus for those students that would like to jump on and, and travel to Sioux City East to cheer on the football team. So as we sit at the end of October to celebrate, you know, homecoming, our fine arts, our athletics. I mean, DCG is doing incredible things, which you all know. And again, 7th through 12th grade, we just highlighted the high school, but 7th grade activities had a great fall and we're talking 85-plus percent student involvement in those things. And that's, we didn't even get into some of the clubs. We didn't talk yet about esports and we're getting to. Oh, I want to mention the musical is a week, not this coming weekend, but the next week, Wizard of Oz. AJ and I were there taking pictures with them last week in all their costumes. And Fred has taken over that, that role this year. I mean, they're top notch. So please, please go support the musical next Friday, Saturday and Sunday as well. So.
Don't forget golf.
Golf, thank you. How do I not have that? My, my kid's on the golf team. Forget about that. Golf made the state for the first time in, in 20 or so years. Again, in the big class, performed incredibly well. We had one, one of our players in the top 10. I mean, just again, spoiled. Two of them. Thank you. I missed one. Yep. So awesome stuff. Last but not least, you see the list of Creator that last Monday, Carrie, AJ and I went around surprised all of these staff members. My favorite thing, when I see the list come in is A, they're from their colleagues, right? Their, their teacher friends, their associates, their custodians, their principal. These are all nominated by their colleagues and peers and they celebrate them. So we give them this award with the written out statement that their colleagues shared about. And they celebrate them. So we give them this award with the written out statement that their colleagues shared about them. Here's why. Want, you know, Brittany to win this award, which is super cool. To give to them. Number two is I love the mix, right? There's a whole lot of different positions that get recognized by. Different positions, not just maybe their, their like position. So. Just want you to have that list. It's fun to go around and celebrate these people and. So much fun. I have one that I get to do here. So I need my good friend, Michelle Wormuth to stand up. She does, she does not know this was coming as you can tell by her. I hope you don't meet your goals and get fired face. Yes. Okay. So I'm going to read this. DCG creator, Michelle Wormuth. This was nominated by Ashton Reams, who was one of our curriculum facilitators. These awards are that we asked the staff to pick one of our, our core values that you all helped us work on. So she said collaborative. Michelle holds one of the most challenging roles at DCG, often making difficult decisions, yet she consistently keeps students' best interests at the center of her work. She has been both collaborative and supportive in working with me to ensure the music team moves forward with consistency in areas such as inventory, purchases and instrumental fees. While she carefully follows the law in every decision, she also makes certain her choices remain fair and accessible for all of DCG students. My favorite line, though she may project a tough exterior. Her leadership reflects a deep commitment to equity, integrity and care for both staff and students. So what we give to all of our creators is they get this neat certificate. They have a fun little magnet. That they get to put proudly in their classroom, in their office. So if we can celebrate the talented Michelle. You're not going to get paid again till 27. Yeah. So, okay. Thanks for letting me have a little fun with there at the end, but any questions for me? Thank you very much. She's a creator, Ryan. We're not allowed to skip her anymore.
Ms. Wormuth, please. Yep.
Now that I'm all verklempt, we will be doing the public budget comparison. This is the first time you've seen this this year. If you remember, public budget comparison report is. The four areas that you promised to the public, what you would spend in each of those specific areas across all funds. And if you look at the percentage of expenditures to the amounts published, you'll see that the only one running a little hot and heavy is. The support services area. That would be most of our operations, our building operations, things that occurred during the summer, which makes sense because. A lot of that work is performed in July and August, getting ready for the new school year. So as we move through the year, we will continue to monitor that area to see if it's still going to run at that pace or if it slows down. But once again, this is so the board can take action to amend a budget if necessary. So do you have any questions about the public budget comparison report? Okay. Moving forward, we're going to talk about the limited English proficiency program and allowable costs. And a request to the school budget review committee. Annually, all school districts may request. Modified supplemental authority or MSA to the school budget review committee. For any costs in excess of what they were actually funded for their LEP or their limited English proficiency, proficiency program. The calculation for our school district. We had expenditures of 328,000 serving those students in the program and resources of 212,000 dollars. And so we have the opportunity to submit a request to the school budget review committee for 115,291 dollars and 15 cents. That will be presented to you in new business tonight. If you wish to move forward and take that action, remember what you are requesting is authority. It's not actual cash. Do you have any questions about that?
I, I do. How is? This money trickling down from above federally? I know that with the government shutdown and changes to the Department of Ed, specifically Title III funding, which I believe applies to this subgroup.
So Title III, the portion of Title III that is dispersed at the state level, this is looking back at last year. So this funding would be there. As far as Title III sub grants, our district hasn't had one for three years now, two or three years now. So that isn't a direct impact that I expect this year. As far as the 25, 26 school year. I have received no information that says we will not be fully funded for any deficit or change in resources for this coming year. Yep. Okay. Finally, it's that exciting time of year where we get to review the audit. The great thing about this is our auditors. Fully understood that our district would go to a election vote, a bond election vote. On November 4th and understood the very constrained timeline should we want to sell bonds in the 2025 school year. And so. I have to applaud Bergen KDV Creative Planning, who are our auditors out of Minnesota and specifically Dustin Opats. Who resides in the wrong school district just over the hill. But his willingness to have his team put in long hours to get our audit done so quickly. And have you review and approve it in October so that we are ready. Should timing allow us and should the voters allow us to go forward with a bond sale, we have all of our financials thoroughly in order. So I'm going to take you through a brief skip through the 25 school year. This will be the last time that I take you back in time to FY25. And then as always, any questions you have, you can stop me or we can visit later. The audit is a big document. And so. My encouragement to you is to not only look at the financial statements, but look at that communication letter that's been provided to you. By the auditors to kind of help you understand what the fiscal year in review looks like. With that said, as you look at the financial statements, the management's discussion and analysis is found on page seven through 19. It is an executive summary synopsis. Of the year written by district management and contains a good portion of the data that you would want to review. Beyond that communications letter. Specifically on page 22, you'll find the statement of net position. This is a full accrual statement and typical of what we would normally see in a business financial statement. Sometimes it's a bit misleading because we're not a business, we're a government, but it contains all debt and all fixed asset values in that statement. All funds with the exception of the proprietary funds, those funds are for the farm enterprise and the nutrition funds appear under the section called governmental activities. Pharma nutrition appear under business type activities. None of the component units such as the athletic boosters or FOFa are included in these financials. On page 23, that is called the statement of activities and it lumps all the funds into an expense column and compares them to revenues. It shows what constituents pay for their services under charges for services. And that page is split horizontally by government and business type activities. Near the bottom, you'll notice it breaks down property tax and local option, sales tax revenues. Finally, the one that makes the most sense to me would be page 24, the balance sheet for all funds. Looking specifically at the general fund, unassigned fund balance, you'll see on that exhibit. Nine million, nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. That's an increase over the previous year's 8.5 million of about 1.4 million dollars. Our cash reserve levy for that year is 949,000 dollars. So this makes sense. Typically, we spend a good portion of our cash reserve on increased enrollment and increased enrollment was not something we saw in the last fiscal year. So most of that cash was applied back to fund balance. Also on this report, non-major special revenue funds such as the activity fund, number 21 is listed there. But it is further broken down into detail for you on pages 70 through 72. Also, the capital projects are broken down on page 68 and 69, and those would be the save and the PEPAL funds. Looking forward into the report, you'll notice that the enterprise funds are, are enterprise funds. Self-funded insurance, internal service funds are listed there. Health, employee health insurance is the self-funded fund there and also the employee flexible benefits funds are, are there is the internal service funds. And then finally, further to break down on page 63 through 65. You can see the district's other post-employment benefits liability breakdown. That's 555,736 dollars or 2% of payroll for its OPEB obligation. So if we were to close the doors, that would be. The other post-employment benefits that would be due payable after the fiscal year. It's just a good margin to look at what percentage of payroll is your OPEB. And 2% is a very reasonable number for that. Exhibit D or page 27 is simply a table that reconciles. Page 22, which is the statement of net position and page 24, which is the balance sheet. So it takes it from. Governmental accounting to business type accounting. And this table brings them together to show you. How they reconcile together. On page 28, you'll find the combined statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance. From this table, you can obtain the total revenue figure for the year and use it to calculate solvency ratio. Which as you recall, is a measurement of financial health for the school district. A revenue figure is 49,190,000 dollars. And when we take AEA flow through out of that figure and divide that by our fund balance, we come up with a solvency ratio of 20%. This is a very extremely healthy fund balance. 20% looking into a period of time when we're about to go to the bond market, this will reflect. Very positively in the eyes of an S and P or a Moody's as they look at that. On page 33, this is just an exhibit that gives you an example of the proprietary enterprise hot lunch fund, the nutrition fund. And how it would function if we did not have state and federal government dollars to support that program. It would have had a deficit of 738,000 dollars. So it's really important for the board to understand that not only are we funded for free students. For reduced students who meet those status qualifications, but all paid students receive a portion of funding for every meal claimed. Through that program with both state and federal dollars. In notes to financial statements, I'm going to point out just a couple of things in those notes to financial statements. Capital asset depreciation cycle and the value limits that we've sent are on page, set are on page 32. Our investments and risks are covered on page 39. Our capital asset activity for the fiscal year is covered on page 43. And most importantly for this board, debt service liabilities, long-term liabilities are listed on page 44 and 45 noting. That you have about 75 million dollars in current existing debt, 74,843,242. That's general obligation debt outstanding at the close of the fiscal year. We also have one revenue bond liability on page 45. And it is just over 5 million dollars outstanding at this point in time. The pension disclosure also appears in these statements on page 46 through 54. Once again, noting our net pension liability as an actuarial value of 1.1 million dollars. Page 54 discusses tax abatements by each of the cities within the district and the amount of property tax revenues. That are reduced by those tax abatement agreements. On page 55, we review the categorical funding balance at the close of the fiscal year. An example of a categorical funding would be the TLC program that funds teachers in our district. And when we don't fully expend. It becomes a carryover balance and we determine at that juncture what we will do with those funds and spend down that carryover. Finally, a new note added is note 13, which reviews the changes in funding for the AEA's. So you'll find that, I believe on page 55 as well. On page 76 and 77, property taxes amounts collected by year are reviewed. And mill rates for each expensive year are not listed, but I point out that 2025 was 1871, 2024 was 1812. 2023 was 1876. So you will see our district's need continually hovering right in around that age. That range and moving back and forth as we implement cash reserve as needed. This is also a really nice way to look at the table of federal and state aid comparisons in each fiscal year. If you just want a snapshot of what that looks like. For federal funding in the school year, the district did surpass 750,000 dollars, which makes us eligible for single audit. This year, the two pieces of federal funding that were selected for single audit were. The safety grant or SLF RF grant, which was completed within the fiscal year and also the nutrition fund. This is a separate report, not included in your audit this year, which is new. And that is because, because of changes at the federal level. The new format required for that has not been dispersed to auditor, state auditors and local auditors as of yet. And so our auditors have decided to issue that as a separate report subsequent, just because of our need to have financial statements out quickly. So we really appreciate their work there. And finally, in the comments section, which every board member should review thoroughly, talks about each of the findings of our school district. You will find that we have one significant finding. It is the same finding that we have had for multiple years, which includes segregation of duties. Segregation of duties, we have made some significant efforts to try to mitigate risks. And make some changes to implement internal controls in various areas. Unfortunately, as you read in the comment, this may never be something that is fully achieved by the district because staffing it to achieve segregation of duties. Would be far more costly than weathering the risks. So. I believe you will have that comment for some time, but we're going to continue to work to make improvements in that area and add additional internal controls. I want to point out that this audit finds no significant deficiencies. No non-compliance in federal awards, no questionable expenditures, no questionable travel expenses. No other statutory findings related to its statutory reporting. And expenditures did not exceed public limits. So the only other comment is with regard to certified enrollment. There were 3.26. Students changed in the certified enrollment area. I will note to you. That that is a process dependent on the input of many other districts and having their inputs correct. Which then subsequently impact us. So I tried to fight and say, don't put that in. It's not our fault. But I lost. So finally, this audit is a unmodified, unqualified opinion. And someone says, what does that mean? That, that means it's good. That's a good, clean audit, which is what you want to see. So with that said, I have now provided you with information to perform your fiduciary responsibility of review of the financials of the school district for the. Fiscal year. What questions do you have and what data can I bring to you later?
I don't have questions. I just want to say thanks. You do a great job. I think this is. A lot of districts would like to have an audit like this. And so appreciate all the work that you do. And I know it's not just you, it's your team as well. But you do a fantastic job and thanks for. Taking such good care of the district financially. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Monica.
I just want to take a quick minute to say that I spent, I took time off work last week and I went on a. School building tour with Dr. Bloom. We went to Oakview. We went to Oakview, South Prairie, Northridge, and the high school in the middle of the day, and it was just so fun and cool to see everyone in their environments. Nobody had any idea we were showing up, so we just popped into the buildings, and teachers were super welcoming, got to go into the classrooms and see what kids were doing. It's really fun to see kids learning in different environments, and two of the classrooms we went into were taking tests. And I really wish when I was in high school, I could have taken a test like that. Like, the lights were dimmed, it was cozy, like, it was just really fun. And at Oakview especially, to get to see kids in, you know, the different pods and areas throughout the building, learning and working together. And Northridge, got to see Mrs. Hightland, was hanging out in the hallway with a kiddo who was having a tough time and needed a break. So she was sitting on the floor in the hallway, playing cards with him and letting him know how many more minutes of his break he had. So it was just really awesome to see the cool things going on, and especially when they're unannounced visits. You know, nothing is prepared, and they don't know that you're coming, and so it was really, really fun. And just shout out to all of the teachers, associates, everyone that we saw. You were all doing an amazing job, and keep up the great work. And Dr. Bloom also has another name, if you ever want to call him Mr. Moon. There's a child at South Prairie who expects him to be there every day for math and calls him Mr. Moon, so you can also call him Mr. Moon.
Every day, Mrs. Rance kind of lets me know that my man is looking for my math help. When's Mr. Moon coming back? So I don't know where that came from. But would love to, again, if anyone, I know you got busy schedules, but there's a way I can walk you around. Would love to do it. It was fun to see all the staff doing things. I think one of my highlights with Monica too is when we are in the elementary buildings, the number of kids that were in different rooms from their teacher because they're splitting up math and we're moving kids around because when reading literacy groups were meeting, I'll take this group. So kids were moving a lot in between classrooms, which was super cool. And we had a plan to go to all buildings. Monica got really chatty with people. So we couldn't. I promise I wasn't the problem. That did not keep us on track, but.
We also got to see our own kiddos, which was super fun because my son's entire baseball team was having lunch together, and so I threatened some pictures, but did not happen, but I at least got to sneak one picture with him, but that was fun.
I went to DJ's class, Spanish, and what did we hear? Hey, your dad's there. And is that your mom? Actually, I think we should address this.
Second grader asked if I was his wife or his girlfriend.
Yep, so it got, the kids, they don't, no filter. But a lot of fun celebrating staff, and so if I can do that for anybody, just holler and we'll go check it out. Thanks for sharing, Monica.
Thank you. We'll move along to item nine, old business. Second reading of listed policies, looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Dickinson.
Second, Baker Curtis.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Move along to new business. Students graduating early, looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Monberg.
Second, Vanderwolden.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. The reconsideration committee. The committee membership is, is listed here for your review. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Vanderwolden.
Second, Baker Curtis.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. American Education Week proclamation, looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Viella.
Second, Monberg.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. The LEP allowable costs, looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Baker Curtis.
Second, Dickinson.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item E, the first reading of listed policies. We've got some new administrative updates, some primer updates, as well as the annual mandatory review with no changes. Looking for a motion. Oh, and there's one item being rescinded. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Dickinson.
Second, Monberg.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Consider offering certified employees an early retirement incentive under Board Policy four oh seven dot oh six. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Viella.
Second, Monberg.
Any discussion?
How many did we have take early retirement last year?
I think it was four or five, yeah, and we've identified in here, is it, I can't remember, twenty-six-ish, twenty-two that are eligible.
And was it roughly the same number eligible last year? I don't remember.
Yeah, I think there was five more. Did we add? I think.
Ish.
Ish, yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item G, approve the twenty-five, twenty-six resignation, retirement, early notification incentive. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Monberg.
Second, Viella.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item H, deny open enrollment out application. Looking for a motion.
Move to deny.
Second, Dickinson.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Accept under record bids received for surplus technology. Looking for a motion.
Move to accept, Vanderwolden.
Second, Dickinson.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Award the sale of lots one and two of surplus technology to Tech to School in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, eighty-two dollars. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Dickinson.
Second, Viella.
Any discussion?
I'd like to give a shout out to Stephen Hopper, because I know that that is not an easy task to catalog all of that and then try and shop it around and get somebody to pay you thirty-eight grand for it. So, thank you, Stephen.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. The snow removal bids that Travis and Sean walked us through earlier this evening, looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Dickinson.
Second, Vanderwolden.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Is it, this is a random question, but does it include the salt? Or is that like a la carte?
So I know we do district spraying of brine via our own.
We do that ourselves?
Do that ourselves. I don't know if there is supplemental also from the companies, but I believe this is just one inch minimum snow removal.
I was just curious.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Consider athletic equipment quote in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, four eighty-five, sixty. And this would be a motion to accept. Looking for a motion.
Move to accept, Monberg.
Second, Viella.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve that?
It was just a quote, and typically we would not bring something at that level back to the board. But this one was something that was so public that we might get questions on. We just wanted to make sure that we advocated that the board was fully aware of this, and that's why we put it on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, thanks for sharing.
Okay. Item M, accepting to record the audit for fiscal year twenty-five. Looking for a motion.
Move to accept, Baker Curtis.
Second, Dickinson.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Accept under record bids received for loader. Looking for a motion.
Move to accept, Monberg.
Second, Vanderwolden.
Any discussion?
I guess I have a question about, like, so I know that I asked, and both Travis and Sean said that this would be like a really handy piece of equipment. Obviously replaces two pieces of equipment. It's also not cheap or free. So where, what, what bucket does this come from? Is this general fund expenditure?
This would be PEPAL, the equipment that can come out of PEPAL.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Also, good job on them for shopping around and getting a good deal and being able to use our, like, trade-in stuff, because we don't like to pay full price.
And while we're on it, I just texted Sean, and he said, we do all of our salt in-house, so it's not part of the bid. It's on us, and we do it ourselves, so.
Any other discussion?
We need to clip coupons, man.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Award the loader bid to Central Iowa Farm Store in the amount of fifty-six thousand, four oh six twenty, which includes a trade allowance of forty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars of that twenty-year-old equipment. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Monberg. Second, Dickinson.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. The superintendent goals that Dr. Bloom walked us through a bit earlier. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Vanderwolden. Second, Dickinson.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Financial statements, looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Dickinson.
Second, Vanderwolden.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Finally, six pages of great stuff going on around the district with board commendations. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Dickinson.
Second, Baker Curtis.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. The next regular board meeting is November the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, Dickinson.
Second, Monberg.
All those in favor indicate by saying.